Good evening and welcome to City of Pasco's Council Meeting. The Council thanked you for being part of Pasco, for being part of your city government. At meetings, the City Council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. This meeting is being televised live on PSC TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, may I get a roll call, please?
Council members Campos.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Torres.
Present.
Mayor Protan Maloney.
Present.
And Mayor Barajas.
Present. Thank you, and with that, may you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that, and now we go on to our consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the council, by the City Council, and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members or the public, the item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. Item A, approval of meeting minutes. To approve the minutes of Pasco City Council regular meeting and regular workshop held on May 2nd, 2022, and May 9th, 2022, respectively. Item B, bills and communications. To approve the claims in the total amount of $4,744,145.74. To approve bad debt write-off for utility billing, ambulance, cemetery, general accounts, miscellaneous accounts, and municipal court accounts receivable in the total amount of $178,827.2, and of that amount authorized zero to be turned over to collections. Item C, resolution council, um, council goals for 2020, 2022, and 2023. To approve Resolution Number 4182, establishing primary council goals for the ensuing calendar years of 2022 and 2023. Item D, resolution process water reuse facility BS release of interest agreement. To approve Resolution 4183, authorizing the city manager to sign and execute the process water reuse facility agreement with Don and Qualla BS and BS Farms Incorporated for the release of interest in the United States Bureau of Reclamation parcel number 113-080-050. And with that, can I get a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
There's motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Protan Maloney and seconded by Councilmember Campos. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
So I think I hear a point of clarification from Councilwoman Torres that the parcel number was read slightly incorrectly. It's 113-080058, and I believe I heard the final digit is zero, um, just to put that as a point of clarification.
Zero five eight.
I don't think it substantively changes things, but for record, we want to make sure we reflect that correctly.
Correction to 113-080058. Any further questions?
Is there anything to do with agenda or do amend the motion, or are we good?
No, I think you're fine.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Roach?
Yes.
Serrano?
Yes.
Campos?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Milne?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
And Barajas?
Yes.
Great.
And it passes unanimously, thank you. And with that, we move on to item five, proclamations and acknowledgements. Um, we actually do have a presentation by Director Worley.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. We invite you all to adorn your hard hats for the presentation tonight. This week is National Public Works Week. And we just wanted to take a moment and recognize all of the work that our Public Works employees do to help make, uh, all cities, and especially Pasco, a safe place to live and to work, and to be able to provide all the services they need to, uh, do their daily lives at home and at work. So, and I believe you have a proclamation to read?
We do have a proclamation to read. Uh, proclamation for Public Works Week, May 15th through the 21st of 2022. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewer, streets, and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, construction, and continued maintenance is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works employees, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Blanch Barajas, Mayor of City of Pasco, Washington, do hereby proclaim May 15th to May 21st, 2022, as Public Works Week. And with that, we have a special guest, correct?
Yes, we do. We would like to present, the honor of, uh, accepting the proclamation today is Dustin Whitman. He's one of our project support specialists in the engineering, uh, division, and he is also one of our Employee of the Year Award winners.
Thank you, and again, congratulations on the Employee of the Year Award. And with that, we move on to item six on our agenda, visitors other than agenda items. This item is provided to allow citizens the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the City Council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is to provide a venue, is not to provide a venue for debate, or for the posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time, and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources, some questions may be best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by the mayor. Those with a lengthy message are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. And with that, is there anyone in our audience that wishes to speak to the council? And we have Mr. Portugal first, and then I saw Mr. Barnes next.
I have a timer, so I stay within the three minutes. Buenas tardes, good afternoon, honorable council members and city staff. My name is Gabriel Portugal, my address is 804 Road 52. I'm here as, uh, representing the Downtown Pasco Development Authority on the chair. I want to just share with you, um, uh, our Pasco City Council, uh, and to our communities utilizing your platform media that you have throughout the videos that you provide for our community. To inform you that, um, well, to share a note about Cinco de Mayo Festival. Uh, I think I came to you, uh, to speak with you before this festival and mentioned to you that the City of Pasco is, in the Tri-Cities, the most diverse, um, city in the Tri-Cities. And I don't think that can be debated, is diversity, uh, is present here. And, um, so I share with you also that, um, diversity is our strength, but unity is our power. And I'm sorry about that, maybe sound like a cliche. But the Cinco de Mayo Festival is, is a vivid evidence of these words. I want to thank, uh, our 100% volunteers, DPA Board members, Claudia Tapia, Kylie Grimes, Jose Iníges, Alexia Estrada, Christina Viera, and Thomas Granboi, for their dedicated time and effort with the festival. I want to thank the City of Pasco staff and the departments working with us at DPA to ensure the festival was a success. I would also like to thank the Pasco Police Department Officers, Sergeants, and especially Sergeant, uh, Rico Pruneda and Sergeant Thompson for their dedicated efforts to, to provide safety and security for our event. And, uh, just to share with you that for 30 years, approximately, I have been organizing Cinco de Mayo, and there are only two or three festivals I remember with very large community participation as the, um, as a 20, uh, 2022, uh, festival. My, my, my phone is ringing here, sorry, distracts me. I have this hernia, sorry. So, um, there's different factors that contributed for a festival to be a success, and I think we all already know that COVID was really a, you know, a big event for every life, and not only in, in our state, but in the world. And, um, so coming out of COVID, it was an opportunity for our community to, um, to take this, uh, great opportunity to come together, and, and we saw that. And, uh, like any other festival, we had some difficulties with serious issues before and during the Cinco de Mayo Festival. The DPA and the City of Pasco worked to, to ironing all this, um, whatever was possible to ensure the festival would go as scheduled.
I'm going to ask you to please wrap up your comments.
Yes, uh-huh. So, uh, the City of Pasco and, and us, we found solutions, uh, so together, the DPA and the City of Pasco did everything possible for our community to enjoy a week-long of events. And last, I just want to thank our sponsors, and I'm never going to mention them, but there'll be an article in the paper coming out with, uh, the sponsors and, and all the volunteers and the universities and, and school districts that provided personnel to come and, and, and help us plan this event, thank you. And just want to close it with that, that diversity is a strength, but unity is our...
Thank you.
There you go, thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. Barnes?
Good evening, I'm Dallas Barnes, 1628 West Marie Street, Pasco, Washington. I am here again to, um, voice a concern about the code enforcement efforts and the code enforcement policies. It's true that our code enforcement people are doing a good job, Pasco is extremely clean, but I'm actually here to, again, request a review of the policies and practices in which they're enforcing the thing. Number one, um, Pasco code enforcement, when they are investigating a complaint, it is, the complaint is complaint-driven, but the person making the complaint is unknown both to the code enforcement officer and to the people who are receiving the complaint, like myself. That is sort of an injustice, because it requires us who are on the end of that complaint to, you know, we don't know if we have a George Zimmerman in the community, or, you know, somebody else that we don't want there, um, making these complaints, but we don't get any feedback and opportunity to voice those concerns without coming before the code enforcement board. Not only am I speaking for myself, I know I'm speaking for one additional property owner and maybe, not maybe, but and some others. But here's the concern, since it is complaint-driven, and we don't know who is voicing the complaint, it can go from anywhere, from having a refrigerator in your yard to grass cutting or whatever it is. I've even had a complaint about some cow manure on a piece of property, and I own no cows in all of this, but somebody had dumped, um, um, you know, their trailer on that, and as the property owner, I'm held responsible for that. And what the problem is, if I don't take care of that, I'm subject to a penalty. And there's the problem, I don't know who did it, I didn't do it, as a property owner, I'm responsible for it, and that is a problem. And believe it or not, the city, the code enforcement gave me plenty of opportunity to clean up a problem that I didn't create, and I do that, but I don't like it. And here's what the other problem is, they will fine me if I don't do it to their schedule. Uh, they call it an offense, and then if I don't do it, then I'll get a repeat offense and doubling of the fine, and if I don't do it then, I'll get a third offense and, and a repeat, three, three-time strike. The problem is, and I'll be through here in just about two sentences, is that these things add up, um, and, um, put an unnecessary burden upon the property owner, especially those of us who are in our senior years, those of us who are on fixed incomes, and those that I represent or are speaking on behalf of who are on fixed income and that type of thing, and especially during the COVID season. These fines can go anywhere from a hundred dollars a day to $500 a day, and I have paid them both, and over a period of time, um, that is a problem. What I'm asking the city to do, and I'll take my seat, is to have an external review, not an internal review, we had one of those, and, and this has been going on for years, we've had an internal review, we haven't seen any of the kind of results that, that the people I'm talking to are satisfied with. And so what I'm asking the City Council to do is strongly give consideration for an external review of the city codes that the code enforcement offices are, are, are enforcing, and certainly a review of the way that they issue out their penalties, which also include a two-year probationary period for the property owners. In other words, you got to be on your guard if you're 80, 90, dead or dying or whatever, uh, because if you're in violation of whatever they have penalized you for, then you get the double their fine and so forth and so on. I'll wrap that up, but basically what I'm saying is that the code enforcement people are certainly on their posts, uh, monitoring the city for the codes, but the codes need to be revisited, and
Thank you, sir.
I'm asking that the City Council strongly consider an external review to do that on behalf of the property owners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? And lady right back here, and it seems to be down the row.
Hi, I'm Candy Jones, I'm from Richland, Washington. Um, I'm addressing the shelter issue. Um, I spoke at the Richland City Council meeting about a cat that I rescued from a wheel well. He was emaciated, bleeding from the nose, mucus coming from his mouth, and hair loss. He was taken to the shelter that day, that was March 29th. Um, he was observed there until April 7th, at which time he was transferred to Benton Franklin Humane Society, and I'm told it was to be able to better medically care for him, and that came from the, a medical staff person that came out of the Benton Franklin Humane Society medical room. That's what she told me why he was transferred. Okay. So the condensed version is while he was there, he went through round one of doxycycline. I told them I wanted to adopt him, so they put $25 on him. I asked, has he seen a vet? No. My second visit, I told, he, I was, I was told he was on round two of doxycycline. I said, has he seen a vet? No. But his breathing has improved, the drooling has stopped, and he started to gain weight, and the fur started to grow back. She said five more days of antibiotics, a few days rest, then he'll get neutered and go home. The condensed version, again, is I received a call telling me it was time to go home, and I picked him up on May 12th and adopted him. I want to emphasize, people, 45 days they had that cat, never did he see a vet, not in 45 days. My daughter-in-law told me, if you didn't stand for something, you'll fall for everything. I'm here tonight standing for the new Tri-City animal shelter that was promised well over two years ago, has the funding, and now is on hold again because someone thinks putting a million dollars into that storage building at Benton Franklin Humane Society is the answer and takes precedent over replacing the deplorable rodent-infested building that has no air conditioning, heat, ventilation, in parts of it, falling ceiling tiles, backed-up water, lead paint, asbestos, feces-soaked tunnels that I've spent hours sitting on with dogs, and it needs bulldozed. It's neither safe for or acceptable for staff, visitors, volunteers, and most of all the, the animals that have to live there. I watched the Pasco City Council workshop, and you've admitted that you failed. It has failed, it's failed miserably, that it's, deplorable isn't even a description for that place, it needs bulldozed, it needs set on fire, it needs gone, and it also needs to be put, a new shelter needs to be put under a contract. If you want to extend the current contract out till December, that's great, put it out for contract so there's accountability, there has to be accountability, so things will always fall in line, you won't have to go discover another locked building, which I did, oh, sorry, which I did. Um, the back building is locked again. I asked why?
Ma'am, I'm going to ask you to
Oh, sorry, oh, okay. Okay, anyway, um, thank you, the animals have no voices, we are their voices. I'm sorry, but my feeling is shame on anyone who puts anything before this new animal shelter.
Thank you. And if your comments, ladies in the back that you wanted to comment, are your comments similar to the animal shelter? If you have any new information regarding the animal shelter other than the comments already brought forth, then go ahead and step forward to the podium.
Good evening, Council, thank you for listening to me, my name is Angela Zeiler, I live in West Richland. I was your former contractor for 12 years at that animal shelter from 2007 to 2019. I'm here to ask you to listen to my questions, obviously you can't answer, but I do ask you to listen to the questions and come up with your own answers. First off, how did the cities justify bypassing their own renewal codes regarding bidding requirements? That's on the request to actually extend this contract for another two years without going to bidding. The second question is how did the cities resolve the conflict of interest concerns that were provided in 2022, leading the city to not select Benton Franklin Humane Society? Third is how is the city going to resolve the conflict that arises when public funds are being used for privately-owned property? When I was at the contractor and the city, the cities had planned to build, I had offered to go out and get donations of property to have this facility built on. I was told that couldn't happen because the donation couldn't go to the city at the time, they would have to go to my nonprofit at that time. However, the cities couldn't build on it because it was owned by my nonprofit, not by the city. Third is auxiliary shelter is being proposed as an emergency shelter with a memorandum of understanding. However, until the new shelter is built, there will be no space to utilize it as an emergency shelter, because it'll be used for all the TCAS animals, because your Pasco shelter would not be utilized anymore. After which BFHS will use it as necessary for intake holding of their animals, even if they are no longer part of that contract. Once again, potentially being too full to accommodate emergencies. Per the previous RPFs, and it is clear the cities only want to find out, to financially lie, be financially liable for the first three days of an impounded animal. After which time, the animal's legal ownership is transferred into that of the contractor, which makes the financial responsibility no longer with the cities. So why does it appear that the current contract of $1.5 million, the cities are now going to pay for not only the veterinarian, but also staffing for both TCAS and BFHS? In your workshop, Autumn White identified that BFHS has been looking for a veterinarian for nine months prior to taking this emergency contract. Before, or, that would have made it three months prior to that, before taking over the emergency situation. And it is BFHS intent for the workshop to continue to staff a veterinarian even though now they are no longer TCAS, or if, even if they were no longer TCAS.
And I'm going to ask you to wrap up your comments.
You bet. Last but not least, you might ask yourself, if Autumn White has not been able to secure full staffing levels over the last six months, what or where have the funds for those staffing levels been applied to? Thank you.
Thank you.
Miss, quick question, um, are you willing to submit those written questions as part of your record?
Absolutely.
Will you hand those to the clerk, please?
You bet.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to Council, Mr. Felix Vargas, and then Damian?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council, two points. I'm Felix Vargas, Pasco, uh, Road 900 North, Road 64. Two points, kudos to Gabriel Portugal and all the organizers of the best-ever Cinco de Mayo Festival, the best certainly in the state of Washington. The participation by the Covial tribe was particularly, uh, strong, and it underscored the, uh, the theme of diversity that, uh, Mr. Portugal was talking about. Secondly, I want to offer some observations on this code enforcement action involving a distinguished member of our community, Dallas Barnes, a gentleman I've known since 1956, um, here, who's made quite a difference, uh, in everything he's done in the city. Uh, in fact, you honored him, uh, not too long ago for having served 10 years on the Police Advisory Board. He also came together to support the, uh, funding for, uh, the MLK Renovation Project, which some of you were very interested in as well. The, I, I understand the need for standards, uh, on, with respect to property maintenance. We must have them, uh, they're an essential element of keeping our city presentable and looking, looking good. Uh, however, I do think that we need to be somewhat flexible in the application of these standards and, uh, and requirements we have, particularly when it comes to, um, vulnerable citizens, uh, senior citizens, disabled persons, um, single mothers who work from sunup to sundown to provide for their families. People who have difficulties in meeting the standards or meeting the, uh, the requirements under code enforcement. So I, I think that the city can be not only a punitive, um, element, but it can be a force for good, it can bring about a solution in, in, in dialoguing, communicating better with its citizens, uh, about the requirements and looking for ways to help them where they cannot help themselves. Certainly, we owe that to them. So I, I would, um, second the call for an independent, um, uh, look at the case of, uh, Mr. Dallas Barnes and others in our community who may struggle daily to meet the, the requirements. Also, look at what constitutes a violation, uh, does a flat tire in your driveway really constitute a violation? Does an unlicensed vehicle really, uh, rise to the, uh, the level of being in a violation? Look at, look at some of these things. Better communication, more flexibility, more understanding, I think will, will serve us well in this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Davis?
Hi there, uh, my name is Damian Davis, I'm the Executive Director of the Franklin County Historical Museum, just up the street. Uh, I've seen many of you in the museum, hope to see the rest of you soon, no, no pressure. I did want to say we have a phenomenal event getting ready to kick off, um, this Saturday, we're doing our dinner under the dome event, um, all the proceeds are going to go towards finishing our annex building. And for those of you who don't know, uh, we started a capital campaign right before COVID hit, uh, we're able to fundraise a little over three-quarters of a million dollars, um, all by, uh, membership, so no tax dollars going towards that amount. Um, and we're working on building an annex building to bring our entire collection home. So our museum is an old Carnegie library built in 1911, um, and we are hoping to be able to utilize it more efficiently with display space, not so much for storage. So right now, about a quarter of the building is taken up simply for storage of items. So we're planning to move a lot of those over to our new annex, and then also have some event space and meeting space available to the public, um, in our new building, so we're really, really hopeful for that. We've done these dinner under the dome before, um, and we're really hoping that we can get really good turnout for this, since it's our first one in a couple of years, since we have not been able to do that since COVID has happened. The tickets are all going to be going, again, proceeds are going towards our annex to finish that, and we're using all local vendors, um, so we're using Child Tretoria, which is a local downtown vendor, as our food vendor, um, we, we got all of our rentals from the City of Pasco, or not the City of Pasco, but from vendors here in Pasco, uh, and of course, we're going to be utilizing the gorgeous, um, courthouse building, so our rotunda is gorgeous, if you've never been in there, I highly recommend it, um, and we'll have some live music, uh, local wines, local breweries, all from Franklin County. So we're really hopeful that we can use your, uh, platform to get the word out there, we have about 20 tickets still available, um, they are going to go fairly fast, we just opened it up last Thursday to non-membership, so, uh, if you're a member, you probably saw the email already, if you're not a member, now's your opportunity. Um, you can come into the museum and purchase the tickets, you can also get them on our website or through our social media, so, hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you say the hours of the event?
Sure, so it's going to go four Sure. So it's gonna go four o'clock. It's gonna have a social hour for about an hour, uh, and then we're gonna sit down to dinner. We're hoping to wrap up around eight, eight thirty. Okay. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Hello, um, my name is Nicole Hornbuckle and I'm from Pasco. And, um, I just wanted to bring up, um, a concern I had about animal neglect and just calling the animal shelter and just not feeling like there was much I could do. Um, one day I was walking by and I came across these two dogs and one was in a very, very small cage. It was like a big lab stuffed in a tiny little cage and he was just crunched in there and, um, it was really sad. So I called the animal shelter and, um, was able to get him, you know, taken, they took the cage away and was able to get him taken, taken away. But, um, there's also a German shepherd that is in a cage and he's just in there all day and all night and he never gets let out. And, um, it didn't really seem like there was much the animal shelter could do about it. And I'm, I've just been in anguish over it because it's, it's very small and he's, he never ever gets let out of that cage. And ever since I came across that, those two dogs, the lab and the German shepherd, I've been keeping a very close eye on him and, um, I'm just, I just wanted to bring that up. I, I wish there was more rights for animals here and I wish there was more we could do about things like that. And that's it. I'm not very good at this. This is my first time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And ma'am, you have a comment?
I do, I do, yes. I'm gonna try to make sure, but I don't know what to say. You just, Madam Mayor, you're just coughing me if I'm doing something wrong.
Thank you.
My name's Kristy Kessler. I actually live in Kennewick, but I, um, actually have two dogs currently in my possession from the Pasco Animal Shelter. I adopted Prince in twenty fifteen and Charlie is with me from the neglect case in November. So I love the shelter, but I am beyond disappointed. There are only really two types of animal people in the world. And you either are part of the family with them or they're not really that important to you. It's really is that simple. And today, the city council has an opportunity to look in their hearts and to let their community know which one of these people you are. As a member of the animal-loving community, I'm here to let you know, we're a community in crisis and the Pasco Animal Shelter is at the heart of that crisis. Council members, today is the first day of you becoming a part of that solution rather than part of the problem. There are three cata- catastrophic issues currently at the shelter that go far beyond the dilapidated building. The lack of community service and confidence. This is demonstrated by over fifty percent drop in volunteers over July in two thousand twenty-one. There's a lack of transparency at the shelter. It's a public entity and they have continually locked, denied access portions of buildings. They actually delete posts from the community members and tell them not to come back to the shelter if they don't align with their code of conduct, philosophy, and animal care. Since the Richland City Council meeting, we've been unable to locate the current adoption fees for the shelter. At the last check before the Richland Council meeting, adoption fees were as high as seven hundred dollars. It used to be a hundred and fifty. That's two hundred and fifty dollars higher than any local rescue in our area. The third and most disheartening issue with the current administration is that rescues are refused animals they can help. The feeling from the community is they will not give up animals that they think they can get top dollar for. This also contributes to the overcrowding, budget concerns, and leads to the travesty we had last month. A thirty-dollar adoption fee for animals. A dog fighter will happily pay five hundred. Two fifty is not a problem either. Only certain animals were thirty dollars. I would encourage you to ask them why they, which, how they chose that. A community is judged on how it treats its most vulnerable members. These animals without a voice need you to stand up and be their voice. Thank you guys for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak to the council? Thank you, everyone, for bringing your, uh, concerns. Um, we will work with staff, uh, to address these issues. And with that, we will move on to item number seven. Reports from committees and or officers. Do we have any verbal reports from any of our council members?
I do.
Council, uh, Councilwoman Torres?
Yeah, I'll give a quick update. Um, I attended the Columbia Ripper Walk ribbon cutting on Friday, e- Friday afternoon, no, Sunday evening. Oh, my goodness. Um, and Saturday I attended, uh, Lolita's Daycare or Childcare Center, excuse me, ribbon cutting as well. It both had a great turnout and it was nice to see new businesses opening up here in Pasco. And that's actually the second location for, um, fun-to-learn daycare. And that second location is called Lolitas.
Thank you for that. Um, Mayor Ferter Maloney?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Barajas. Um, so I just want to report briefly that, um, as, as council may recall, um, I was appointed to, to serve on the Legislative Priorities Committee for the, um, Association of Washington Cities. Um, met with, um, Deputy City Manager Adam Lincoln and, um, and our contractor up in Olympia, um, Brianna Murray, um, earlier today, um, to talk about, um, what priorities, you know, what, 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 what can I do to help further the city of Pasco and, and cities like us um, to interest up in Olympia. So, great conversation. Wednesday is our first meeting as a, as a, um, Legislative Priorities Committee, and I'm looking forward to that. So if there's any, uh, any information that, that anyone would like us to help prioritize, please, um, um, send it over to, uh, Mr. Lincoln and he can help get that over to me and, um, and sort it. So, thank you all. Um, re- really, really looking forward to people's opinions. And, um, for any other council members and any other city that might be listening or hear about this, please do let me know. I'm interested in, uh, furthering, furthering the region. It's not just about Pasco, but it's kind of about Pasco. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Campos?
Uh, Councilwoman Roach was first.
Thank you, Councilmember Campos. Um, visit Tri-Cities Board. Some of you may have already heard the notification that, um, uh, CEO, uh, Michael Novakovich has accepted a position, um, elsewhere. And so he will be exiting end of June, uh, July first, and so the search is on for a new, um, chief executive. Um, and just wanted to say that they are considering making a national search. But, um, as of right now, it's, it's confined to Washington State Destination Marketing Organization to try and get uninterrupted, um, sort of continuity, I guess, in leadership. So if you know anybody in the Visitor Bureau, uh, market and is an executive, pass it on, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Campos?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I'll try to keep this short and sweet. We had our Ben Franklin Transit regular meeting. It looks like we are finally back to meeting in person for that particular organization. They have been under, um, I believe, uh, federal law, so they, we've been having a hard time meeting in public. And, uh, we finally got an opportunity to present a bunch of awards to a lot of students. If you notice, there's a lot of buses around town now that have new artwork on them. Those are from our local high school students. There are some very talented kids that put some really nice artwork out there. Um, we, uh, also talked about a lot of stuff in our consent agenda, which is nice because not every item needs to be discussed. And I think we're finally starting to hit our stride with the current board, um, taking us a bit. Uh, it looks like our building is moving forward, which is a big deal for me because it's kind of the one hot topic that I've been starting as long as I've been there. Uh, we started looking at extending our contract with Columbia Basin College. It's really, won't get down the weeds, but that's exciting. They bring a lot of ridership and we're looking forward to bringing that on. Going back to art, I attended the art thing for the Tri-City Union Gospel Mission at Wine Social. That was very fun. Lots of, uh, good music, good company. Uh, I think that event was able to raise close to two thousand dollars for the Union Gospel Mission, so that was unique.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Serrano?
Thank you, Ms. Marion. Um, sorry. Uh, I just want to take a moment to highlight one of our community members. Um, for those of you who follow football, uh, Sebastian Gutierrez, who was a twenty sixteen Pasco high grad, was actually, he wasn't drafted through the football draft in April thirtieth is when it concluded. But by the end of the draft, he was being heavily recruited from what his father tells me. He signed as what's called an undrafted free agent with the Denver Broncos, who he's in Denver right now practicing with the team. See Zach really excited. He's probably gonna be the first to get a Gutierrez Broncos jersey, being a native to Denver. Um, but again, this is a kid that shows perseverance. Again, he comes out of Pasco High in twenty sixteen, goes to Dakota, North Dakota. Might not stay at a very small school. Uh, one of the seasons was canceled due to COVID and yet even going undrafted, he ends up being able to sign, uh, with a preferential team. And, you know, now he'll get maybe the chance to play with Russell Wilson, uh, not one that I care about as a Niners fan. But, uh, I know, I'm sure plenty of people in this room will be excited about that. But again, I think it's just that great story of the perseverance and, uh, you know, I'd love to recognize this young man, especially, uh, after he comes back. I think he's got about five weeks in Denver and then he'll be back hopefully in town and maybe we can recognize him, let some of the kids meet him, get excited about that. These are the stories we need to celebrate about Pasco. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I hand it over to Councilmember Melon, I did have some talking points, but you took it away. Uh, anyway, Sebastian, congratulations on your, on your goals. Councilmember Melon and then Councilmember Campos.
Oh, okay. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, this last week I did attend a Zoom meeting with the Pasco Parks Plan Priorities Meeting with some, the city staff. And it was a good, uh, couple-hour meeting and I just wanted to say a lot of the really good ideas were kicked around, uh, such as doing something with the tribes, whether it be like, um, um, you know, like a remake of what a village would have looked like along the Columbia River, um, say like in the Chihuahua area, Chihuahua Park area. And maybe having like a lacrosse field as well. There's a lot of good ideas. Not saying we're gonna do it, but, uh, I just thought it was a real constructive meeting and I know a lot of this stuff will get kicked to the city council eventually. So, uh, just let you know that, uh, a lot of people in the community are working hard to try to make Pasco and our parks a better place. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Campos?
Mine's really quick. It's kind of on the coattails of Sebastian Gutierrez. I believe, if I remember right, Deputy Chief Cook, your boy just passed academy, correct? Or did he get badge somewhere? No? Nope. I saw a social media post. I swear it looked like you. It looked like your mustache.
It may have been, uh, like a one of those memories.
Maybe you were just shaking hands. Aw, man.
So he has been with WSP for, I think, seven or eight years.
Councilmember Campos, maybe what you saw was a new graduate.
Could have been.
Shake, shaking hands.
That's probably what it was. You were shaking hands with a new graduate, but I could swear, I'll go back and revisit what it was.
I did shake the hand of our new graduate, um, last week.
Great job.
Police academy. And I would be happy to have him as my son.
I'll do more homework.
Thank you, though. Thank you for bringing that up. And yes, uh, just want to highlight real quick that our police department is out there recruiting, actively recruiting for, uh, police officers. And just recently, the new graduate from the police academy and then they have to go through our, uh, own academy? Our own training, correct. So we're hiring in all departments. Any further comments from our council? Looks like there is none, so we will move on to item, um, eight on our agenda. Hearings and council action on, on ordinances and resolutions relating there, too. None listed. We will move on to item nine. Ordinances and resolutions not related to hearings. And we have item A, resolution, regional pavement cut policy. Uh, Director Steve Worley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Uh, you may recall that, uh, a presentation was given about the regional pavement cut policy back at the April fourth council meeting. And at that meeting, it was asked whether or not this policy had been presented to some of the development community and, uh, requested that we do that. And so, uh, I attended the meeting that's held monthly. I did it on May fifth. And, uh, there were not a whole lot of developers there, but the one that was there, and actually wasn't the developer, it was the developer's engineers. And so, um, they were very supportive of the concept of a regional pavement cut policy. So did not hear any negative comments about the policy, uh, other than, I think you'll see one note in the agenda report where, uh, as long as it doesn't hold up the development of property that's adjacent to a roadway that has been resurfaced. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that. Do we have any questions? Uh, Mayor Ferter Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas, and thank you, Mr. Worley, for, for making sure to, you know, reach out to the developer community. And I think it's a good reminder to everyone that, you know, um, we are trying to reach out and we are trying to talk to, to, um, stakeholders that are, are being impacted by our actions. It's really important to make sure that your voice is heard. Um, I know our staff is receptive. Certainly, our council is very receptive to, to public comment. Uh, Mr. Worley, do we, did you hear any, anything offline out, outside that meeting? Um, it sounds like maybe that wasn't well attended, but I, I, I know we'd heard in council chambers a, a potential concern. Uh, was there any follow-up, uh, either verbally, in person, um, email or anything like that?
I, I didn't. There was a, uh, comment made at the April fourth council meeting. Uh, I think there was probably a little bit of a misunderstanding based on those comments. Um, I think the impression that the commenter had was that the, uh, size of the recommended patch was gonna be on all utility cuts, but according to the policy, it would only be that size of a patch on roads that had been recently resurfaced and had to, for some reason, had to be cut. So we wanted to make sure that the patch is the best it can be because we want to maintain the integrity of the pavement.
So if it's a new road, we need a wider cut to make sure it's a more level, more complete surface, so it'll last, um, more towards the length of the entire road. Whereas an older road that we're cutting into that, um, is probably in need of repair anyways, um, it's not so urgent that it's a perfectly, um, repaired portion of that.
Certainly a smaller cut. It goes from twenty-five foot wide to six foot wide.
Right. I, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Worley.
Any further questions from any council members? Councilmember Serrano?
Thanks. Um, just, I'm, I'm friends with Steve Alman. He seems to express the same concern. I don't, I don't know whether his opinion is accurate or not. Um, and I'm not trying to call you out. It's just, uh, he has reached out to me on this specific issue and expressed the same concerns, you know, suggesting there might be other alternatives. Um, so I'm, I'm just laying that forward as we have discussion. Um, and I, I appreciate that you are reaching out to the community. And, um, if Steve didn't reach out to you, I know he did make his comment, but, uh, you know, the phone works both ways, so there's that.
Any further questions?
Just a quick one. Um, have you heard from the other cities what kind of feedback they're getting?
One of the cities had already passed it. Another one was meeting with their development community, uh, the week after I did. And they were interested in how our meeting went. Uh, and then the other, uh, hasn't started passing it yet, but I think they are going to start soon.
Any further questions? Councilmember Campos?
Uh, yeah, I guess I just expressed, I'm of the mindset, you know, the engineers really are the brains behind a lot of this. And if they're in support of this, I, I don't want to have the opinion of one person, albeit experienced person, hold us up on this issue. I think it's probably safe to say we just move ahead on this and let it be.
Thank you for that. With no further questions or comments, can I get a motion?
Yes, um, Mayor Barajas, I, I move to approve resolution number four one six five, adopting the regional pavement cut policy and revision to Pasco's design and construction standards and specifications for public works and improvements.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Campos. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Six pass, one aye. Thank you for that. And we move on to item B, resolution, fourth amendment to Northwest Baseball Venture Ventures One, L- Elsie for Geesa Stadium lease. And we have a presentation by Director Rat.
Yeah, just to let everyone know on council, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Um, we've been in a lease with the Tri-City Dust Devils since two thousand eight, uh, as, as stated in the staff report. Uh, over the past number of years, uh, we've amended the lease to extend the deadline, remove some small clauses within there. Um, the lease is due to sunset on, uh, December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Over the last couple of years, as you're well aware, uh, the COVID nineteen pandemic significantly reduced and canceled the season for the Dust Devils in two thousand twenty. Um, they were at risk of being contracted and, uh, uh, dissolved by Major League Baseball. They did remain with a new contract and a new Major League affiliation for ten years. So over the last couple of years, with that going on with the Dust Devils and our efforts here at the city to address, uh, COVID restrictions in our own right, uh, we, we felt that, uh, using the force majeure, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, clause of the contract to extend it out one more year would grant, uh, both parties additional time to negotiate a new lease, um, as we have this, uh, new direction for the team. Um, some of the new items that we'll need to discuss is obviously an extended season, since they're at a higher league, they play more games. Um, there's some development potential out on the site in that area and, and sort of associated use with, uh, neighboring properties. So, um, we'll be looking to do that over the next year. Um, we'll be looking to do that over the next year, uh, should this extension pass, uh, city council.
Thank you for that. Any questions or comments from our council members? Mayor Perdama Loney?
Thank you, Mayor Barrahas. Um, just real quick, Mr. Ratkai, um, does that spell out capital improvements and how that sort of plan works? I, I recall from our, our, um, contract, our, our updated contract with the golf course and the, and operator thereof, that there was a spelling out of joint funding for improvements, et cetera. With this, with this contract, i- is that the sort of thing that would be covered in this, um, updated contract?
Yeah, we do have, um, we do have a, a bond with two million set aside to invest in the facility. We've added new seats, new lighting. Uh, we're currently working on locker room expansion project to meet the new standard for the league. Um, future capital projects will definitely be discussed in this regard. Uh, to ensure that the stadium remains a viable economic partner for the city.
Great. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Any further questions or comments from council? Seeing none, can I get a motion, please?
Yes, uh, Mayor Barrahas, I move to approve resolution number four, one, eight, four, authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number four to the term of the Geisa Stadium. Lease with Northwest Baseball Ventures One LLC.
And I'll second that. Moved by Mayor Perdama, uh, Mayor Perdama Loney, seconded by Councilwoman Roach. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. And with that, we move on to item C, resolution, purchase and sale agreement for Heritage Boulevard property and again, Director Ratkai.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Once again, uh, Zach Ratkai here. Um, yeah, the item brought before this evening is a purchase and sale agreement through resolution for, uh, the sale of the, uh. Heritage property does not have a current address on it. Um, it is a platted parcel along Heritage Boulevard. Uh, we've been approached, uh, for a one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar purchase, which was conducted through the city realtor. Uh, through, uh, market comparisons believed to be a fair purchase price for the property. Uh, proposed use on this two and a half acre parcel is, um. Uh, like, small-scale commercial retail. And, uh, we'll bring forth the, uh, purchase and sale agreement to the council for discussion and vote.
Thank you for that. Any questions or comments from council? Uh, Councilmember Serrano.
Yeah, while this isn't a quasi judicial, uh, I just said I'm friends with Steve Bowman and I see his email address on this. Um. I wanna disclose my friendship with him, but I, I was unaware of this until I read the packet, so. Um, again, understand it's not necessary, but I think it's, uh, important to be transparent.
Thank you for that. Any questions? Seeing there's no questions or comments, can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor Barrahas, I move to approve resolution number four, one, eight, five, authorizing the sale of property located at Heritage Boulevard, Pasco, Washington. And further authorize the city manager to execute the associated closing documents.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Moved by, uh, Mayor Perdama Loney and seconded by, uh, Councilmember Campos. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And it passes unanimously. With that, we move on to item D, resolution, setting the public hearing date to consider the East Lewis Place row vacation. Uh, Director White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and, and council. This item, uh, sets the public hearing date for an application to vacate, um. Portions of the East Lewis Place right of way. It's roughly half a mile east of Heritage Boulevard and on the other side, just adjacent to US Highway twelve. Uh, as this, uh, resolution sets the hearing date for June sixth, uh, staff will have an analysis of the items identified in the Pasco municipal code. And, uh, probably, uh, comment on the direction of the survey prepared by the applicant.
Thank you for that. Do we have any questions or comments from council members regarding this topic? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor Barrahas, I move to approve resolution number four, one, eight, six, setting seven o'clock PM, Monday, June sixth, twenty twenty-two. As a time and date to conduct a public hearing to consider vacating right of way for East Lewis Place, formerly primary state highway number three, Pasco to Italia.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Moved by, uh, Council, um, Mayor Perdama Loney and seconded by Councilmember Mellon. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And it passes unanimously. We're going real quick through this. Item ten, our agenda, unfinished business, uh, item A. Uh, East UGA sewer local improvement district expansion assessments alternatives. Director Worley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Tonight's presentation is to give council and the public additional information. In preparation for the public hearing next Monday night. Uh, since we pa- since we presented this information to council previously and, uh, the council passed the resolution. Uh, for the intent to form the LID, several meetings were held with the public about the LID. And after about four meetings, uh, there has been some comments from folks who are within the LID boundary. Who have expressed an interest in not being part of the LID. And so tonight, uh, Maria Sarah, our CIP manager, will give a presentation. And again, this is just for additional information tonight in preparation for next Monday night's public hearing. We've decided to bring to you two different options for consideration to help address some of the comments that we have received. So with that, I'll turn it over to Maria.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We, uh, have a presentation with slides. I hope to provide clarity on what the. Alternatives proposed are, but certainly if the explanation doesn't address all your concerns, uh, I'm happy to answer questions. So what we're seeing in the slide, um, it has shaded in yellow the parcels that are in the East UGA area as originally. Proposed for the LID. And this next slide actually shows, again, a little bit closer, uh, that LID area, but it also reflects the feedback we have received from property owners. In green, shaded in green, are the parcels that have expressed support for the LID so far. In red, we are seeing those parcels that have expressed opposition to the LID happening. And the hash marks, uh, those diagonal hatching in the parcels, uh. Show the areas that are either already annexed to the city or that are in the process of being annexed into the city. White parcels are those that we do not know at this time whether they would be in favor or against the LID. We are also showing the pipeline proposed, but I will leave that to the alternatives, so let's get there. Okay, so alternative A for the LID boundary and proposed improvements is our original alternative. This alternative proposes to serve all the parcels within the East UGA. Uh, you're seeing on the east side, uh, it is Terrible's parcel in that orange color and then. In a green shaded area are all the parcels within, uh. The limits between the airport extension area and the road sixty-eight. Um, this, while it is the original proposed boundary, what we have included additional pipeline to allow for all property owners. In the Cow Trail area, the Seret area, which I am going to try to highlight with the mouse here. So in this area, there is some additional pipelines proposed to address some of the concerns where property owners that, while they didn't wanna be part of the UGA, one of the concerns was that the. Sewer lines would not be readily available for connection. So there's additional pipelines along Melody Lane and Cow Trail. Would address that concern and would provide a ready-to-connect access to sewer to every parcel. If we go to the next slide. We see what, a closer look at the portion that is, uh, going to be different between A and B, right? So, alternative A is showing again this area between Road sixty-eight and the airport, the pipeline proposed, the gravity main. Uh, or several gravity main trunk lines that, uh, provide access to every single parcel, uh, to connect. Of course, some of these parcels are bigger and will have some extension of sewer mains within. Those are mainly these bigger parcels up here and around here. Uh, but it does provide direct access to these parcels. Now, um, when we look at the next alternative, B.
Quick question, uh, Sarah, if you go, the, um, couple non-green spots to the northwest primarily and then the far northeast. What, what are those plots of land? I don't, I don't think I understand why it wouldn't be uniform over those areas.
Okay, great question. So actually what this shows is with the current grading or the grading as proposed. Um, these are the areas that would not be able to be gravity sewer, but what we know is that. We have the same kind of gaps in this area and in this area and developers in that area have already expressed their desire to regrade. Their parcels in order to facilitate, uh, drainage. So, in this area, we anticipate that it will be the same way. Um, the only difference is that this property owner is not quite ready to develop in the most immediate term. So he doesn't have an engineer on board that is looking at how to masquerade their parcel. But it is very, is a very small amount of parcels, uh, area that cannot be sewer and easy to re-level that area in order to be, uh, be a gravity.
Those, those areas in both, which are included in both alternative A and B would also, would be part of the LID. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Yes. Based on the layout that we just saw, we have prepared preliminary assessments. Um, and these assessments, of course, include every single parcel within the proposed UGA, um, LID area. Um, and what you're seeing on the screen is very similar to what we presented in our previous meeting. Where for each parcel, there is a parcel number, there is acres that that parcel, um, has. And then the peak hour flow based on the proposed land use for that parcel, which may be different from the current use of the parcel. And, um, a calculation of what would be the assessed value based on, in a combination of. Uh, amount of flow and area of that parcel. And this is a, a mixed way of doing the assessment that was very successful in our previous. LID and that was recommended and it was felt by the property owners participating in our meetings that could be a fair way of distributing the cost. Okay, and now on to alternative B. We are looking at it from far away. The main change is in this eastern, uh, sorry, western portion. Southwestern portion of the map and I will go to a closer layout. Here we are. And so, alternative B is the alternative. Um, boundary for the proposed LID, which eliminates service to the Cow Trail, the Seret. Uh, neighborhood. These are smaller parcels that do not have. As far as we know and as far as they have contacted us and let us know, no immediate plans for development. They already, uh, reside in that area and have septic systems that are functioning. And there is no desire to either annex or be part of this LID. They feel they're being burdened. And so, staff took on the feedback received and decided to provide an alternative, since you're gonna hear a lot about the LID in the. Next meeting and understand those comments with the context of alternatives. Um, so for accommodating this new reduced, uh, boundary area. Um, for the LID, we are proposing pipelines that actually do not include pipelines along this neighborhood. And the extension of the gravity main along the Seret Road is, um, reduced to serve, um, is, is, um. Basically not extending all the way to Row sixty-eight. But accommodating everybody that has expressed desire to be connected. And once again, now we see that the actual, the preliminary assessment is much shorter. Uh, there's a lot of bigger parcels with plans for development or open to development, uh, in this, uh, new proposed boundary for the LID. And the ultimate, ultimate cost for the improvements is reduced by about four million dollars. Uh, all the assessments are also smaller for these property owners. Okay, and that gives a somewhat brief overview of these alternatives, but I am happy to answer questions you may have.
Thank you for that, Sarah. Do we have any questions or comments from any of our council members? Councilmember Serrano.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah. And I just wanna thank, uh, Mr. Worley and your staff for take, undertaking this. I know it wasn't an easy task and, um. I'm sure it was highly in response to the many emails and phone calls I received, specifically from those folks on Cow Trail. Who expressed, one, they were recent, uh, builders, most five years or less, some slightly older. Two, no desire to, uh, participate because they saw no advantage to them in that they had no intent. At least this generation of transferring property or separating or dividing in any way, so. I appreciate, uh, that, that you've undertaken this to, uh, again, I know it wasn't easy. I know it wasn't, uh, I'm sure it was a labor of. I don't know, either love or frustration or both maybe. Um, but I do appreciate your responding to this. I appreciate that. This could constitute a savings of almost five million dollars and it services the people, this option B that is. Um, services the people who are desirable. Um, and, and I guess my take is for those on Cow Trail, in the event that we, uh. End up with this approach, just recognize that, uh, granted twenty, twenty-five years down the road, um, one septic may fail. Uh, I don't know what the city council's take is and I certainly won't be here then, but you may be on the hook for a tremendous improvement cost. Uh, for foregoing it at this time. Uh, so that's just kind of the voice of warning that I've, I've tried to render with each conversation is. Yeah, you might not see this right now and certainly for those who are elderly, it probably won't impact them in their lifetime. But those who intend to stay long, um, at some point your septic will fail and, uh, you'll likely be on the hook to figure this one out. And there could be some significant disruptions of traffic patterns and other secondary costs, let's call it, so. Uh, while I think this hits the ham, the nail on the head as far as the desirability, I think as a council, we have a lot more. To discuss as to whether or not, uh, this hits the intent and the need. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any further questions or comments from council members? Go ahead, Mayor Perdama Loney.
Thank you, Mayor Barrahas, and I'd sent, uh, staff a, um, a lengthy set of questions and I appreciate, uh, the, the attention to those. I, I know we got them right before the council meeting. I think there's a, there's a, uh. Um, we're gonna blame it on IT, so I'm gonna blame it on Zach, so don't worry, Dave. Got your back. Um, but so, so I haven't had time to fully digest the, uh, the information, um, provided in that. Um, I would certainly echo, um, Mr. Serrano's comments of, of, there is a impact to these, a long-term impact to these landowners that is, is likely going to happen. Um, albeit certainly not necessarily short-term. I would note that, um, when I look at least from the map view here, um, less than half of those properties are actually developed at this point in time. So, um, there, there may be a desire and a number of people who haven't responded certainly understand the concerns of people who have. But more importantly, zooming out of this issue, um, we have passed a comprehensive plan. That looks at these areas here in terms of, um, relatively uniform development and, and some certain standards of what we expect to grow in a lot of these areas. We're basing our road structures on this. We're basing our sewer, um, um, water, all of our master planning is based off of a set of assumptions of, of how our growth will work. The more areas we leave, um, in unincorporated county, the more, you know, donut holes we form, both from a, from a, um. Municipal services perspective as well as, um, simply not developing, developing them to urban standards. Means that we won't be able to, to meet the needs of our growing community. Land will be more expensive. Taxes will be higher because we're gonna have to run them out further and expand further into our urban growth area. So every time we make a decision like this, uh, I think it's really important that we're looking at the, the bigger picture for the city. Of where, where our job as council is to plan for twenty, thirty, forty years out. And so when we're making these decisions as to whether to include or not include sets of parcels like this, while individual landowners, um, may end up being unhappy with our decisions. Um, our, our job isn't actually to just serve that one individual property owner or a couple individual property owners, but ultimately to serve the needs of. All of our voters and all of our expanded community as it grows into the future. So, um. I, I would very much like to, and I think a lot of my questions, um, to, to staff were in the, in, in context of, how does this affect our comprehensive plan? How does this implement or not implement our goals that we have set forward and adopted as a city council as to how we intend to grow? And how, what precedence does excluding and creating additional donut holes, um, what, what does that set? For the future as we continue to grow and need to expand, um, as we're told, um, to, to, to have another fifty thousand people. Um, living within the city limits, um, over the next twenty years. So I think that's, that's a context that we need to be thinking about. This is less in terms of isolated parcels, but oh, more as the overall picture. So as I digested the email from staff, which again, I, I just simply cannot do, uh, in two minutes before the meeting and then, um, you know, a couple furtive look. You know, a couple furtive looks while uh Ms. Sarah was was sharing with us. Um, as I did just that more, I I think I'm sure I'll have more more thoughts to have, but I'd encourage uh my fellow council members to 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 look at that information and think of it in terms of. Where, who are who are we as a city of Pasco gonna be in the next twenty and thirty years? And what are those taxpayers and what are those property owners gonna need from us at that stage, so, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, any further questions or comments?
Seeing none, um, I guess I'll say I I saw the emails, well, I didn't get a chance to read it at all. Um, I appreciate your presentation, um, Ms. Sarah. Uh, there was the page four of the presentation. That gave a description of the the two alternatives, the L I D cost for alternative A and B. And while I see the four million dollars uh less in the alternative B. Um, the future city cost factored in as zero seems unlikely. Um, if not just more than what we have today. In in either one of those scenarios, whether it's alternative A or alternative B. Um, just so we know about economy and cost of labor and and supplies, so. Um, you know, that that's a concern for me and then just looking at page five of. The legend key, seeing that that alternative B with, um, was it Cow Trail? Is that how it's pronounced, Cow Trail? Um, majority of that area is uh in the legend broken out as white. Uh, with an unknown preference. Um, and so I, yeah, I I hesitate to. Be in support of alternative B when it's not known what the majority of that area is is wanting to do with their property.
I'll answer to a little bit of that if you want. Uh, we try to show what we knew today in preparation of what you will hear next week. Which we think is gonna be a lot more feedback than what we have heard so far. So on that regard, at least it was to paint the picture, what we're seeing, how much. People, how many acres and how many property owners are in favor and how many we know are against and then how many we actually still don't know. Um, and hopefully this two graphics and the idea that there are alternatives, that is not. All or nothing, maybe there is some in between, or maybe it's all. Um, it it's to paint that context when you're hearing all the comments. Next week, we think there's gonna be lots of comments, we've encouraged everybody to provide their comments.
And I'll just add that in that table that you mentioned where it showed zero city cost. That's pretty common for L I Ds because the property owners typically pay for all of the costs of the L I Ds, design, financing, construction, everything. That particular table had a third option to it and it did indicate a potential for the city to extend sewer into that area. Uh, at city cost. But we decided to take that option out, thinking that that's something we can address in the future or as part of the project if we want to. We didn't wanna confuse the process of the L I D with that particular option, so. That's the one that would have had a city cost to it, so we should have taken that row out when we eliminated that option.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, any further comments? Councilmember Mill.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say thanks for the staff for giving us uh some clear uh choices here. Getting love to hear what more people in the the Cow Trail are thinking on that and then also just, let you know, I I always think it's. You know, of course, we wanna hear from our constituents, but also not be the kind of government that tells people what we think they should like or what they think they should make them happy. It's, you know, we wanna do what's best for the community and I do understand Councilman uh Maloney's comments. But on the other hand, it's it's tough being an American and then saying, okay, this is what the government feels we should do. Um, there's there's a lot of conflict, I mean, it makes sense, but on the other hand. Um, so again, I'm really excited about next week's meeting to see what the constituents really want. And as a council that we listen to what these people want, considering that we're not paying their bills, they're gonna have to be on the hook for this, so. Um, yeah, looking forward to next week, thank you.
Just a quick question, has there been any outreach to those um property, property owners, um but still no feedback?
Yes, that is correct, so we had uh mailings and actually one of our staff members. Decided that area with notices of our public meetings, we had four meetings with property owners. Um, the fourth meeting, which was held in the evening, uh to provide opportunity for people that had. Uh, regular time jobs, in which this is not part of their job to come to to the meetings. Um, was the most attended from neighbors in that area. Um, and they expressed, of course, a lot of concern and which is which is what led to this this new presentation. Um, and they expressed their comments. As of a group of people, even for those that were not there. Uh, we have not accounted for those people that were not there in our uh map. Um, since then and since the passing of the intent to form the L I D resolution, which was last Monday. No, it was two Mondays ago. We send uh notices out to every property owner certified mail to ensure that they were delivered. Um, and we know those were delivered, so. We, they are invited to participate in the public hearing or if they're unable to participate in the public hearing, to send their comments in advance to the city clerk. Uh, and some property owners have started doing that. So we hope everybody gets a chance to express their their for or against in this.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Serrano.
Did we receive at any time a mass signed petition in opposition to this?
No.
Okay, that was a comment that I received from various individuals that. They were interested in collecting all their neighbor's signatures that would show us that pretty much the whole Cow Trail was against it. Um, so I guess note of comment to those individuals, if you're listening. Bring it before, otherwise it won't be in the record. Um, I can't say that the the desire to have a petition for all the neighbors really constitutes anything that changes my. Decision-making process, so thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Sarah, and um one last call. Uh, if you're in this property, please bring your comments to our clerk or to the meeting uh next Monday. To the next meeting. And with that, uh, we move on to. Lost my place. We move on to item eleven, new business uh resolution process reuse facility. Renewal renewable natural gas request for proposals, ratification of selected respondent. And we have Director Worley again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, before I big.
You have to get back into my agenda.
Before I get into this particular item, I wanted to share with you that each of you received. A small packet of information related to the process water reuse facility. This is in response to a request of one of the council members for a schedule. And a description of all of the P W R F projects going on right now. And so we wanted to be able to give that information to you, so you are able to get a full picture. Of all the different pieces that we keep bringing to you to take action on, so. Please review that and if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to uh Maria or myself and we'll be glad to answer any questions. So with that, um, we are uh have this item tonight and uh on January tenth. Council may remember that I gave a presentation about the potential for a renewable natural gas developer. To who has offered to come in and help uh develop a new pretreatment system at our reuse facility. Um, there is a uh state law, R C W seventy A one forty, R C W. That gives us the guidance on how to go about entering into contracts like this. And so it's called the Water Quality Joint Development Act. And uh there are several steps that are required as part of that R C W that lead up. To the ability to negotiate a contract with any R N G developer. And to expedite the process and uh being mindful of the council's time. A lot of these items have been completed by staff already. And but they ultimately require council approval. And so uh either through ratification uh like what we're doing tonight. So one of the first items is to uh recognize that we did put an R F P out and we advertised it for thirty days. Uh, so that anybody who is interested could attend. Uh, we did hold an onsite meeting at the reuse facility for anybody who wanted to attend. So they could tour the existing site and ask questions about it. The R F P or Request for Proposals included a set of criteria, evaluation criteria in the R F P itself. So all respondents could see what it was each of the uh responses were gonna be uh scored by. And so those are in your agenda packet and those are the items that we took a look at. Ultimately, uh, we received uh two proposals. And uh both, the other. Item that needs to be approved by council is to determine whether or not the proposals received are uh both. Bon qualified respondents and responsive to the R F P. And in looking at the two that we received, staff has determined that, yes, both of them are qualified and both of them were responsive. So uh with all of that, tonight's item is to ratify the. Actions that staff has taken up to this point and recommend if council approves to. Move forward to the next step, which is a bidders conference with the two respondents. And then eventually move into negotiations with uh the selected respondent. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that. Um, do we have any questions, comments from our council members? Seeing.
Just real quick, sorry.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor, um, thank you, Mr. Worley. Um, so when when we're looking at selecting the, after the bidder conference, et cetera, just understanding the process. Uh, will that be, will the next steps all be taken by staff? Or is that then have to be back back to council for ratification of whatever contract was ultimately determined? Um, can you help me understand, so there's a couple more steps in the process here, I just wanna know what our action will be coming up?
And the recommendation is to go ahead and let staff do that bidders conference and and talk to them about their submittals. And whether they understood it and see if any of them wanna adjust their proposals based on any new information that they might have, which there really isn't any. Um, I'm not sure, I'd have to defer to legal counsel on whether or not that then has to be ratified back again.
Uh, no, so the next two steps are, uh, this is a a pretty complicated statute, but it's complicated for a reason. Because we're going through a different process than the normal public bidding process, so. Uh, the next thing that would come back uh with with the approval of this, uh, then staff would be able to go forward with the bidders conference, uh, go through that process. Start a negotiation with the selected bidder, uh, and if that falls through, then move to the next bidder. Uh, at the end of the day, uh, that will, there'll be a couple other steps that staff will have to take to get the uh proposed agreement. Uh, to Department of College for review. Uh, it also, we also have to come back in front of council for a public hearing on the proposed agreement. Uh, and then after all of that's done, uh, we finally get to come back and have council approve uh the actual agreement. Uh, which is then subject to a potential appeal uh by somebody else. Uh, if somebody wants to appeal the uh decision of council, there's an appeal process that hopefully we won't have to utilize. But uh long and short of it is, uh, this is kind of, uh, you you'll see this probably at least two or three more times. Great, I appreciate that, I just wanted to make sure I understood the whole picture here, 'cause this is definitely a different process than I've I've read before and. And when we're looking at dollar signs of um between seventy-seven million and a hundred and eighty-five million. Um, certainly those are very large dollar signs and I appreciate that there's more steps to both vet those out because with that wide of a range, um. That that's that that is a quite quite the range um for for activities like this, so I'd just love to just understand a little better of what um. Of what that is, so thank thank you and and thank you, Mr. Ferguson, for for spelling that out for me, thank you.
Thank you for that. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
All right, buckle up, everybody, this is a, this is a heck of a uh motion I have to make here. Um, I move to approve uh resolution number four one eight seven related to the process water reuse facility to renewable natural gas request for proposals. Which includes the following items, ratification of the of the following items. Uh, publication of notices um for the R F P on March seventeenth and March twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-two. The evaluation criteria within the R F P is appropriate for the subject project. The two proposals received are considered qualified and responsive. An approval for this for staff to conduct a bidders conference to assure that respondents have a full understanding of the proposals. Make respondents aware of any changes in the R F P. And allow respondents a reasonable opportunity to revise their proposals for the purpose of obtaining the best and final proposals. And to begin negotiations of a contract with the selected respondent whose proposal it determines to be the the most advantageous to the city.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Moved by Mayor Perdelloni, seconded by Councilmember Serrano. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And it passes unanimously. Thank you for that. With that, we go on to item twelve, any miscellaneous discussion. City manager date.
Not none this evening.
None this evening, that was, that was quick. Any comments from any of our council members?
Just a comment that I have a work trip planned uh for next week and so I was gonna be out the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, so. I can connect remotely.
Thank you, councilmember compost.
This really must have been Public Works Week, all of our items were taken over by Director Worley. Man.
And with that, we move on to item, sorry.
Oh, no, I was gonna say we gotta wear our fun hats home.
Thank you, Councilwoman Torres, and we move on to item thirteen, executive session, we do have need for executive session. Um. Yes, just a second. Uh, city council will now meet uh in executive session to discuss. Uh, consideration of site selection or acquisition of real estate purchase or lease. If likelihood that disclosure would increase price per R C W forty-two point three zero point one one zero one B. And performance of a public employee per R C W forty-two point three zero point one 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 zero one G. Uh, for ten minutes, joined by um our city attorney. Uh, deputy city manager, um, and um director White. Director White. We'll take a five-minute break, uh, and then from that, we'll be uh taking a ten-minute executive session, so we'll be returning at. Um. Eight uh forty-two. Thank you, we'll be back. Council meeting has reconvened at eight forty-eight and with no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.